Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, and will be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, and then Commissioner Coggan will lead us into Pledge to the Flag.
Pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you again, Lord, for the privilege that we've been afforded to represent our constituents, Lord, and I ask with the agenda that we have in front of us tonight that you give us some guidance, Lord, and clarity on the discussions that we have, that we keep it civil, Lord, and that we show the sort of respect that each one of these commissioners are worthy of, and that we honor you in the process and thankful for. Lord, our troops that are overseas as we remember 9/11 and the fateful day that happened 12 years ago, that we're still thankful, Lord, that there's men and women out there that are fighting to protect our freedoms, and I ask that you continue to watch over them and their families, Lord, as they've sacrificed for us. Lord, give wisdom to our leaders in Washington tonight, both sides of the aisle, Republican and Democrat, and with our president with some of the decisions that they have to make, Lord, help them to lean on you for wisdom and guidance and knowledge, and the decisions that they have to make as well that affect us locally at a state level and nationally, Lord. We ask everything in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino. Twenty-one present.
Okay, thank you very much. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I have a copy of those in front of me. I'll review them, find them in order, and move that they be approved.
All right, and a second from Commissioner Coggan. Anyone have any corrections or additions? Okay, all of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, now we have a time for public comments, and I will remind our speakers that you have a limit of three minutes, so I want you to come forward and give your name and address, and there is a little timer on the podium here, and then you will see that, and hope you'll be respectful of that. So, we have eight people that have signed up to speak tonight, and the first person that we have is Philip Griffin.
I come before you this evening to address two items that you will be dealing with in this meeting. First is regards to the motion that will come before you, which we will ask to send a resolution to the Rutherford County Republican Party, asking them to rescind their vote to go to partisan primary elections. I'd like you to be mindful of the fact that they've taken two votes in the affirmative to take their right, as outlined in the Tennessee Code, to hold those particular type of elections, partisan primaries. I wholeheartedly feel this is in the best interest of our county that we do have partisan primary elections. It'll allow voters an opportunity to see where the candidates stand in comparison to their own views, as they make a decision of whom to vote for, and once elected, it will serve as an additional way to hold our leaders accountable to the principles they propose to uphold. Secondly, I'd like to address the sprinkler system regulations, which you'll vote on this evening as well. I'm strongly opposed to this regulation, and I feel it's overreaching, and that it will be to the detriment of our economic, of our county's economic development and future. If a homeowner seeks to build in an area that doesn't provide adequate fire protection, and he or she is cognitively of that, I don't feel that it's the government's role to prevent them from doing so. If the intent is to save lives here, I think we should really take a stronger focus on smoke detectors. I've spoken with several firemen, I've done a lot of research on this. The proposed sprinkler systems do not activate until 150 degrees. By this point, a home will be filled with smoke, and escape would be very unlikely. Therefore, I'm concerned that the proposed sprinkler systems could in fact actually propose a larger problem than the one it's proposed to solve. Further, this proposal's been said to be relevant to only the areas right outside the city limits. I would ask that you present a map that shows exactly how far outside the city limits that we're discussing, because currently there's a lot of development going on, as you know, right outside of the city limits, and I want to make sure that those areas are not involved in this. In closing, I'd ask that you respect the county Republican Party's decision to hold partisan primaries in 2014, and I'd ask that you not hinder and slow the growth of our county via sprinkler regulations. Thank you for allowing me the time to address you, and I thank you for your service to our county.
Mr. Griffin, what is your street address? We need that for the record.
1440 Hainaut Lane, I'm sorry for not giving you that.
Ms. Joanne Skidmore.
I'm reading a letter on behalf of Chairman Jeff Peach, the chairman of the Republican Party of Rutherford County. He sends his apologies for not being here this evening. He was delayed by his work for the city of Smyrna. As chairman of Rutherford County Republican Party, I had debated upon whether or not I should even address the county commission on this night regarding the recent issue found within the media concerning partisan commission races. The reason I say that that is because I am not one that believes I need to comment publicly on every issue just to hear myself speak. However, there has been an inordinate amount of rhetoric and misleading information discussed within the newspaper and even radio talk shows. Because of that, I felt it appropriate to address this honorable group of legislators briefly. As you are fully aware, our executive committee voted to allow candidates for the county commission to run as a Republican in the 2014 election cycle. Our vote, and the consequent of our vote, is not a mandate that requires or even suggests to any incumbent or any other candidate that they must run for office as a Republican, Democrat, or as an independent. Just as I have stated previously, whether or not a candidate chooses to publicly attest that he or she has adopted the set of principles of the Republican Party is completely up to the candidate. The inference that the local party is forcing anyone to run is any one-party affiliation is simply not true. One way of looking at a candidate's party affiliation, if they so choose to make such public, is likened to a homeowner's search for a new home. Just like voters, a prospective homebuyer will recognize one of the first attributes of a home to be its foundation. Some buyers prefer a block crawl space, while others prefer slab. The candidates that choose to publicly declare Republican, in essence, are declaring they subscribe to a Republican vision and core beliefs concerning the role of government and fiscal conservatism. The voters will know by this public affirmation what type of foundation this candidate rests upon. Obviously, just like the homebuyer, the voters should seek further information about the candidate and not rest solely upon the foundation, but as anyone is aware, the foundation is important. The last point that I would like to touch on is the recent comments found within the media. By those who have been opposition to vote of the Republican Party bipartisan races, it tends to imply voters can either be bought, or even that the Rutherford County voters don't mind of their own, don't have a mind of their own to decide who is best to represent them. I find this offensive as a voter, and I'm sure Rutherford County voters are offended by this contention. It is important to remember that the voters of our county decide whether or not who will represent them, whether the candidate is a Republican, Democrat, or an independent. We believe, of course, that a majority of Rutherford County citizens share the principles of the Republican Party, and we believe the candidates are like-minded, are important to the future success of this community. However, just as it should be, the voters... Sorry.
Finish up.
I apologize. However, it should be as with the voters of this great county can be, and we'll decide on each elected office individually who will be the candidate for the next few years. Thank you for your time.
Give us your address again, please, so we can put it in the record.
It is 2208 Alexander Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 37130, and I'm the executive director of the Republican Party of Rutherford County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Skidmore indicated that Mr. Peach, he was next on our agenda, is not here, so that being the case, we'll move forward. Our next speaker is Emily Mitchell, and please come forward and give us your name and address, please. Well, you were, but we've missed two people that are not here with us, so you're...
I'm back, on my soapbox again, sorry. I'm Emily Mitchell, and I am speaking as an individual tonight. I have, I wear many hats, lots of many hats, so I do not prefer to wear any of those hats tonight. The last time I spoke here was at June's budget meeting, and I told you how proud I was of how everyone worked together to get something solved for the students of Rutherford County. And also, the SROs was a major concern for me, because I am a first-grade teacher in Rutherford County schools. I thank you personally for putting your political differences aside and working to get something to benefit the county done. But now it seems like some are not too happy that we work together, or that you work together, and that disappoints me. And to me, I feel that if we go to starting to labeling ourselves and what we're doing, that it defeats our purpose. I think you were doing a fine job without your labels, and as a first-grade teacher, I bring out my reference of the sneetches. And on this story, if you happen to remember this, by Dr. Seuss, in this story, there were sneetches that wore stars upon theirs. They had stars on their bellies. There were sneetches that were not allowed to have stars upon theirs, so they had none. So here's how pathetically awfully sad the ones without stars looked like. They're excluded, and they're ostracized, they are not allowed to participate because they don't have them. So what the guys did without stars is they called in the money man, and the money man came in with his big star machine, and he slid all the sneetches without stars through and printed stars on their bellies. Well, when they came out, everyone was confused. Who is the ones that were the original stars, and who are the ones that are the stars now? They didn't know, so Mr. Money Man stepped back up, and he said, "Well, you can pay some more money, and I'll take yours off." So right through they went again, and he removed them. Well, at the end of the story, they were all confused. So all the labeling caused in this book was that it caused division, it caused confusion, and it also caused one guy to get super rich. Okay, and there's, you can see the green from way back there. So where does the labeling stop? If we begin to start labeling where we did not label before, are we going to start posting teachers' voter records outside of their door? Okay, and I'm sorry, and I've taken up too much time. It needs to stop now. I have finally realized it's not about a party, but it's about our students and our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sue Kane.
Sue Kane, I live at 1707 Berkeley Street, and I'd like to make a couple of comments tonight about the possibility that some of you will label yourselves on the next ballot for election to the commission. When I read in the Daily News Journal about that being done, and a local political party choosing to have a primary, several thoughts occurred to me. It said in an article that this party wanted to choose the candidates. That didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but I'll give you my thoughts on the matter when you think about it. I've always been able to talk to any of you, and I've never had any idea whether you were one party or the other. It just hadn't been a question in my mind. In fact, I can remember when I went through Leadership Rutherford back in 1991, we were told by those that presented the information to us that there were two bodies in this county that didn't have an affiliation next to their name on a ballot. And that was the county commission and school board members, that they weren't allowed to. So I have to ask, what's going on? Because the human beings that fill your seats should not be able to make a decision according to how their political party feels on the matter of the vote. They should do that, make their vote, in the best interest of the people who live in this county. All, what is it now, 260,000 of us? Point two, as for the political party choosing who's be allowed to run for a seat. When I taught school, if I had chosen, notice that word, choose and chosen, if I had chosen which of my students were going to pass my class according to whether I liked them, or whether their parents were of the correct political party, that wouldn't have been a very good thing. Doesn't sound like a good thing, does it? No, and it's not. Might even be illegal. I don't know. I would never have done such a thing. In fact, I worked overtime trying to make sure that all of my students had an opportunity to do all the work they had to do to pass. We do not need candidates in this county who are chosen by a small group of people. One last sentence. The political party wanting to choose the candidates wanted to save money. If you have a primary, folks, you're not saving money, you're spending more money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Kathy Ferris.
My name's Kathy Ferris, and I live at 3210 East Compton Road. I'm here to speak on a nonpartisan issue, again, because we all drink the water and we all breathe the air. Last month, when my friends and I addressed the county commission, we invited you to a hearing that was held at Walter Hill Elementary on August 22nd by the TDEC Division of Air Pollution Control. The public hearing was in regard to the renewal of the BFI Republic License for Air Quality Control. I would like to thank the two of you who attended, and say that we regretted not seeing more of you there. It seems that the county is depending on TDEC to get things right with regard to the landfill, but I've had some experience with TDEC, and I think it's a very frail read to cling to. You might do well to remember that it was TDEC that made the deal with the waste processors in Oak Ridge to send radioactive waste from all over the country, and now it's coming even from Germany to Tennessee to be disposed of. That was a very secret deal that was made. I don't have complete confidence in TDEC, even though that was many years ago. That waste would still be coming here if it hadn't been for the opposition of citizens of the county who voiced their opinions very loudly. Now, there's some things about TDEC that I would like you to know. It's composed of divisions that are separate, and sometimes the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing. For example, Mr. Patrick Flood, who's the new director of the Solid Waste Division, told me after one of the meetings of the Public Works Committee after he appeared here, that Middle Point doesn't have 10 million pounds of radioactive waste from a decommissioned reactor in Michigan. That was nonsense, he said. Well, I told him, my information came from the TDEC website, and he might do well to check it out. Another thing to know about TDEC is that it doesn't do testing and monitoring, it only checks paperwork. The processors decide what radioactive waste is safe to go into Tennessee landfills, and TDEC just checks the records. It's also true for air pollution control around landfills. Pat Sanders and I talked at length with the head of the TDEC Division, Mr. Barry Stevens, and we were told that BFI Republic does all the monitoring, and that his people inspect the records once a year. Sorry, I'll have to make the rest of my case next month.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Bob Bullen.
I live 144 Cherry Lane, Murfreesboro, in the 16th District, the heart and soul of glorious old Murfreesboro. At this stage in life, I feel more comfortable reading a prepared statement, so I hope you will indulge me in this. I briefly return to you to caution you that the integrity of the commission is in peril from the attempt to impose a local primary election system. A resolution may be introduced toward the end of this meeting requesting the two major political parties not to do so. I urge you, for the sake of grassroots democracy, to support this resolution. A primary system at this level will turn you into a miniature Washington, D.C., which hosts a Congress with only an 11% approval rating. Is this what you desire? I hope not. The current system is not broken, and allows this body to represent the public, not a few self-serving individuals willing and able to buy those who fear them. You have earned your seats the same way as most of those who came before you, the proven old-fashioned way: knock on doors, know people by their names, listen to people, be seen and be available at all hours, and do what you think is in the best interest of the entire county. If the primary system is put in place, political life will continue, but the nature of this assembly will change in subtle ways. The general public will be the loser. Ask yourselves if you want to appear bought and paid for, or do you wish to remain the voices of your constituents as you are today? If you are expecting friendship from those who wish to buy you, then you would be wiser to take the late President Truman's advice and get a dog. Long live the republic, and free and independent thinking in elected local assemblies. Thank you, and it was a pleasure to see my old colleagues again.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, next, we have Axel David.
My name is Axel David. I reside at 214 Airport Avenue in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I'm here today to address the fire sprinkler resolution that will come before the commission later this evening. It is my belief that this resolution is a step in the wrong direction for Rutherford County. The first issue is the crony capitalism issue. The organization pushing for this resolution is called Fire Team Tennessee. As you may or may not know, the organizations that comprise of Fire Team Tennessee are, two of them are Tennessee Fire Sprinkler Manufacturing Association and the Tennessee Fire Sprinkler Contractors Association. Let's take a step back and look at this. For-profit corporations are using a front to rein this resolution as an emotional argument, willfully ignorant of reality. This type of crony capitalism is having a detrimental effect at the federal and state level, and I don't think we should allow that to creep into Rutherford County. Secondly, is the concept of a nanny state government. Now, I can't speak for everybody, but I think the people of Rutherford County are capable of making their own decisions, and don't believe that the Michael Bloomberg style of governance is the right thing to do here. So where do we draw the line? Should we ban dryers because 15,000 houses have lint fires? Should we ban heaters because 25,000 houses start a fire from the space heaters? What about limiting the height of the house still in one story, so we don't have anyone falling downstairs or falling off the roof while they're building it? Well, I know the firefighters' hearts are in the right place. The reality of this is that it will price many people out of owning their own home, and have little effect on the bigger picture. While suppression systems do have a benefit, there is little more, there is also more affordable options, such as interconnected smoke detectors, that have a significant benefit. This isn't Chicago, this isn't New York, this isn't Detroit or Los Angeles. We don't need, or we don't want, the local government to control our lives. I urge the commission to vote against this resolution. Thank you for your time.
That concludes those that have requested to speak, and we're not precisely at 6:30, but we're going to say that we're there, and we're going to have the public hearing next regarding one rezoning request, number 13-A013, on behalf of George and Veronica Buchanan, located at 1700 Butler Road. The existing zoning is a commercial neighborhood, and the proposed zoning is light industrial on a site of approximately 14 acres, and Mr. Demossi will tell us more about that.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. We just have one rezoning application for you here tonight. As Mayor Burgess stated, these properties are located along Butler Drive, Butler Road. The subject properties were rezoned from R10 to I2, which was an industrial classification under the old zoning resolution back in 1985. In 1999, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved a conditional use permit for a children's daycare center, which is currently in operation. Based on the regulations in the previous zoning resolution, the daycare center was the only use that was approved for the property. Any other uses would have had to come back through the commission. Variances were also granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals in 1999 to fire hydrant requirements, and also the front setback in screening requirements, both in 2004. Now, since that time, a fire hydrant has been installed out there, which really made that moot. The property which holds the daycare center was subdivided from the parent tract back in 2012. The current zoning map, which became effective back in January of this year, January 1st, zoned both properties under consideration today to commercial neighborhood, CN. When determining new zoning districts for existing businesses, staff looked at the number of factors, including the current use of the property, tax records, and those sorts of things. At the time, staff felt the commercial neighborhood was an appropriate zone considering the use of the property. That zone allows for a variety of retail and personal service establishments, but not larger and more potentially impactful commercial uses. The owner of the property has since requested that both properties be zoned to light industrial, which is more consistent to the zoning that they had prior to the new ordinance taking effect back in January of this year. Now, Joby Jackson Boulevard is currently being extended from the existing interchange at I-24 to the west, which includes the widening of the existing segment of the street from Stevens Bend subdivision to Shelbyville Highway or South Church Street. Both Joby Jackson Boulevard and Butler Drive have pronounced industrial presences, and because of the constructions going on in that area now, we do anticipate that to continue. So staff did recommend approval of this application. The planning commission had a public hearing, they also recommended approval. It was unanimous, but there was one abstention, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions, or Mr. Demossi, before the public hearing? Okay, thank you then, sir. All right, we're going to declare the public hearing open with respect to this request by George and Veronica Buchanan. If anyone wishes to speak for or against this proposal, this request, please come forward and make your statements. Public hearing is open. If anyone wishes to speak, please come forward. We have one lady, Ms. Buchanan, coming forward.
I'm Veronica Buchanan, and I reside at 5825 West Gum Road, Murfreesboro, 37127. Like Mr. Demossi said, we, the property was originally zoned light industrial, and we want to take it back to that, to get the highest and best use for the property, so that's all I have.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, we have another gentleman. Is this young man wishing to speak, Ms. Kidmore, or is he just visiting? Anyone else wishing to speak? If no one else wishes to speak, then the public hearing is closed, and do we have a motion concerning this request? Commissioner McAdoo.
I'd like to make a motion that this rezoning approval be approved.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan and Ms. Allen and others, I'm sure. Now, any discussion or questions? All right then, all of you in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That it reflect that it was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Demossi. Okay, now we're ready, Mr. Gooch, for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow commissioners, steering has several items for your consideration this evening. On your desk, you will find a list of notary candidates, and I move for their election, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. All in favor of these election of the notaries, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Second, we need to fill a citizen-at-large vacancy on the insurance committee. Steering recommends Mr. Ricky Marlin. I move for his approval, Mr. Chair.
And a second from Mr. Jernigan. Any discussion on that? All of you in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Next, we need to fill two vacancies on codes enforcement adjustments and appeals board. Steering received one application, and steering nominates Mr. Joe Machoto. I so move for his approval, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Farley. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll have one vacancy yet to fill. Is that correct, Mr. Gooch, at a later date?
Yes.
Okay.
Need to announce a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Also, we need to announce a vacancy on the Beer Board, an alternative vacancy. The judges of the General Session, Juvenile, and Probate Courts of Rutherford County have requested appointment of Mrs. Christina Lamparta as a judicial commissioner. Am I announcing that, or we voted?
This is the appointment on the judicial commissioner. Yes, sir.
Announcing that.
You're going to get that person actually...
Okay, well, steering recommends Mrs. Lamparta. I so move.
Second by Commissioner Farley. All right, all of you in favor of appointment of the judicial commissioner so named, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Well, we're going to elect the chairman pro tem. You can, if you choose, or you can carry on.
Next, we need to elect a chairman pro tem. Are there nominations from the floor?
Commissioner Phillips.
I nominate Commissioner Steve Sandlin.
I make a motion, all nominations cease, and we elect Steve by acclamation.
Second by Ms. Cook. Any other discussion on that before we vote on that? All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? So Mr. Sandlin has now been chosen as chairman pro tem. Congratulations. Now, we'll continue with the election of the chaplain, Mr. Gooch.
Taking nominations for court chaplain.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Commissioner Doug Schaefer to be chaplain.
Second from Commissioner Jordan and others, I'm sure, is there...
Other nominations?
No other nominations. Mr. Farley?
I'll make the same nomination. I'll make the nomination, and we'll take him by acclamation, and elect Mr. Schaefer.
Right, second, Ms. Cook, again. Any other discussion? All right then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And congratulations, Mr. Schaefer.
Next, we have the confirmation of election of commission chairman. I believe that chairman is Mayor Ernest Burgess.
Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Sandlin. Ask them if they have any other nominations or if anybody wants...
I'm sure there's no other nominations. Is there a motion, Gary?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, nomination cease, and Mr. Burgess be elected as confirmation.
Second, Ms. Cook, again. You're good at seconding here tonight, Ms. Cook.
All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And then on your desk, or somewhere in your iPod, you should have the standing committees. The steering recommended, and I move for their approval, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Any other discussion on these election of the standing committees? All right then, you're ready to vote. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None speaking? All right. Now, ladies and gentlemen, as we normally do, I believe, we're going to give each of these committees a time to adjourn themselves into 205. We're not going to adjourn. We'll probably turn the volume down, but you're to go in the room 205 and select your chairperson and vice-chairperson, and come back and report to us. So our first committee is Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, and you will tell us or reaffirm your meeting dates concurrent with this. So would the Budget Committee members please go into 205? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the report from the Budget Committee is Ms. Ely is chairperson, Mr. Will Jordan, vice-chair, and they continue to meet at 5:30 on the Thursday prior to the commission meeting for the next week, so the week prior to the commission meeting. Public Safety Committee, please adjourn to the room 205. and they continue to meet on the fourth Monday at 5:30. Now, we need the Public Works and Planning Committee. Okay, the Public Works and Planning Committee has reported. Mr. Joe Frank Jernigan is chairman, Mr. Brad Turner is vice-chair, and they continue to meet on the first Tuesday of each month at 6 o'clock. Health and Education Committee. The report from the Health and Education Committee is Mr. Jeff Jordan is chairperson, Will Jordan is vice-chair, and they continue to meet on the fourth Tuesday at 5:30. Property Management. Okay, the Property Management Committee has reported that Mr. McAdoo is chairperson. Ms. Tiffany Phillips is the vice-chair, and they meet on the fourth Thursday at 5:30. Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Did we do that before?
First meeting.
We do that the first meeting? I think we do. There is no report from the Purchasing Committee, so we're ready for Ms. Commissioner Ely to take us through the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee Agenda.
Item J-2A, the General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the general fund be amended as follows. From the Election Commission, increased revenue from other state grants, $364,350. This is part of the Help America Vote Act. And increased expenditures, the data processing equipment, $364,350. From agriculture extension, this budget amendment will be utilizing accumulated reserve from rental space, committed for agriculture, natural resources, $100,000, going to maintenance and repair of buildings, $80,000 to replace a roof, and other supplies and materials, $20,000 for the purchase of livestock panels. Correctional Work Center, this is to provide funds for the medical services contract with Dr. Rudd, from an unassigned fund balance of $118,275 to other contracted services, From the Sheriff's Department, increased revenue of other federal through state, this is the Governor's Highway Safety Grant, $10,831, increased expenditures of overtime pay, $9,000, and the related benefits. And from unassigned fund balance, donated funds that were left unspent from prior year, $5,658, other contracted services, $5,658. From the County Mayor, from unassigned fund balance, $30,000, to other contracted services, $30,000. And this amendment is being requested to provide funding to update the strategic plan to assure the growth projections and the operating assumptions made in 2008 are still valid for the new judicial building. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Ms. Cook and Mr. McAdoo. Any discussion? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes.
Motion passed, and twenty yes, is that correct, Mr. Mike?
It's showing 21 on here checked, but the number says 20, so it's 21.
Oh, your light's not lighting up. Sorry about that, Commissioner Turner. So, we can't see the board like you can. Twenty-one yes, the motion is passed, thank you very much.
Item J-2B, Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the Special Purpose DEA Fund be amended as follows. The Sheriff's Department, increased revenue from asset forfeiture funds, $15,221, increased expenditures for motor vehicles, $15,221. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second Commissioner Jernigan, any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you, motion passed.
Item J-2C, the Ambulance Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical services, from assigned for public health and welfare, $30,468, to motor vehicles, $30,468. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second Commissioner Sereno, any questions on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes.
Item J-2D, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the general purpose school fund be amended to reclassify the gifted programs from special education to regular education. To provide funding for an energy management position utilizing revenue from the Energy Efficient School Council. Reduce the career ladder revenue and the related benefits, and reclassify the superintendent's chief operating officer supplement from career ladder extended contract to career ladder. Provide additional funding for textbooks utilizing available funds from the unassigned fund balance. And provide funding from the unassigned fund balance for a transfer to fund 189 Other Capital Projects Fund to increase the construction amount, the construction account for the Blackman Middle School Annex, according to the schedule, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second Commissioner Cook, any discussion?
Yes.
Schaefer.
Well, for one thing, I don't like four different amendments with this amount of money all lumped together, but because one of them I just really don't like, so I'm going to vote against all four. I hope 10 more of you do. And that is the school textbooks. The price, this is for school textbooks, it's going to be ordered at the end of this year, for next year for social studies. And the school board thinks they need 1.2 million more dollars out of their unassigned fund balance. And here we are, we're going with what, 45 other states, and the prices are going up astronomical, and we should be, you know, the power there of competitive bidding, et cetera, like this, should be that we ought to be able to work out pretty good prices with other states going with the same type curriculums. I'm sure if we asked Mr. Baum, you know, though, that he could say about out at the university here, that some professors managed to write their own textbooks and make minor changes, so new ones have to come every year, and that way it gets some publication in this type thing, and it costs immeasurably for school books. We're getting to the point in a minute, though, 1960s, when I got my undergraduate degree, you know what, the same thing was going on, the professors wrote their textbooks. But this one, there's a little, this included in this 1.2 million is the fact that the State Board of Education decided that they were going to limit the number of tech, teacher books, textbooks, that teachers could have, that they would give to them. And the idea behind this was that the books would be less expensive. Well, we're putting 1.2 million in addition for these books, and we're having to buy teachers, the teacher versions of those, which, you know, are more expensive than the regular books. So for that reason, I can't support this, any of these amendments, because I got one choice, yes or no. And like I said, I think that, to me, what it is, the school board, I have to go back and look, and got to get other school systems, and appeal to the State Board of Education to sometimes think things through completely before you come up with your great thoughts.
Other comments, Commissioner Phillips?
As a teacher, I have to respectfully disagree with Commissioner Schaefer. First of all, we have a huge number of new students in our school system every single year. So I would say that part of this money is probably going to funding textbooks for these new students. Also, I'm sure that most of you probably don't realize that in career and technical education courses, we only get one set of textbooks, period. We have three sections of child and lifespan development. I teach two, and another teacher across campus teaches the other one. We have one set of textbooks. So what do we do? We have to split them. I have 12, she has 12. We have, we can have up to 25 students in a class. So now we are smart enough to utilize online textbooks, and a lot of times I just have to pull things out on my own. But we are continually asking teachers to do more, and more, and more, and textbooks are a good resource for teachers to be able to use. And I don't always agree with the things in textbooks. There's a lot of political stuff in textbooks that I don't agree with, but it's important for teachers to be able to have those resources to be able to pull the information from. And so I'm sure that the school board has probably done their fact checking on this, and probably done due diligence on making sure that they are getting a good deal on this. But if they didn't need that money for those other textbooks, I'm sure that career and technical education could probably use it, because it would be nice to have another set of child and lifespan textbooks.
Schaefer.
I just, I'm not disagreeing with what Commissioner Phillips said, but part of this is coming because of the increased prices that the county is paying for the teachers' text that are much more comprehensive than the student text. And the other is, is a big majority of this is for social studies, which is not CTE.
All right, Mr. Farley.
With the discussion, I guess, just out of respect for Mr. Odom, I'd like to suspend the ruse to allow Mr. Odom to address what's been said.
Second, Ms. Cook, all in favor of that, please say aye. All right, Mr. Odom, come up and please give us some words of wisdom here.
And we are asking for an increase in the budget for the social studies. Social study is typically a K through 12 adoption. It's one of those books that's used almost every grade. Typically, this year, we had reading. Reading is mostly elementary, so reading tends to be one of your lowest priced adoptions. So it was not as high, but we did find that the price is going up. Now, we speak of having Mr. Schaefer purchasing for teachers. Typically, we'll get a set for a classroom. Some of the extra ones we have to purchase, it may be for a special education class, or a class that adds on to that, that you'll have to add a teacher or two to that, whereas in the past, they did furnish them at a higher rate per student. So we are anticipating the cost of social studies to increase by about the amount that we have increased. Rutherford County has, you have a six-year adoption cycle, and Rutherford County has always been able to purchase textbooks each year in that six-year cycle. If you miss your place in the cycle, you're either going to have to double up a year, or you might be 12 years before you can do the adoption. So that's our recommendation. Any questions?
All right, well, thank you then, Mr. Odom. I think the Health and Ed had a good discussion about this when they had their meeting. Any other questions or discussion? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, two no.
Motion passed, thank you.
Item J-2E, Education Capital Projects Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the Education Capital Projects Fund be amended as follows. Education capital projects, from committed for capital projects, $416,184, to architects, $1,155, maintenance and repair of buildings, $415,029. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Jernigan, questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you.
Item J-2F, a resolution authorizing the 2014 Clean Tennessee Energy Grant application for property assessor through the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. Whereas the Rutherford County Assessor of Property has been made aware of a Clean Tennessee Energy Grant Program through the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, which requires a 50% match. And whereas the purpose of the Clean Tennessee Energy Grant Program is to select and fund projects that best result in a reduction of emissions and pollutants. And whereas, if said grant is awarded, the Assessor of Property intends to purchase two electric hybrid vehicles. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the County Mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit a pre-proposal to the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for the Clean Tennessee Energy Act Grant. And if the pre-proposal is approved, to also authorize the County Mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, to submit a full proposal by invitation only for the said grant. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer, any other discussion on this? All of you in favor of that, then, just please say aye. All right, any opposed? Thank you, that carried.
Item J-2G, a resolution authorizing a Title I Grant Application for Juvenile Detention Center through the Tennessee Alliance for Children and Families. Whereas the Juvenile Detention Center currently receives a federal Title I Neglected and Delinquent Program Grant through the Tennessee Alliance for Children and Families, which requires no matching funds, and said grant is expiring on September 30, 2013. And whereas the Juvenile Detention Center Director desires to reapply for the Title I Grant in the amount of $78,130.68, for the purpose of providing funding for a current full-time position, an additional part-time educational assistant, and supplies and materials. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the County Mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for the Title I Neglected and Delinquent Program Grant through the Tennessee Alliance for Children and Families, requiring no matching funds, and additionally, that the County Mayor be authorized to accept said grant if awarded. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner P, any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passed.
Item J-2H, a resolution authorizing a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Health. Whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into a contract agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health for the provision of local health services in the amount of $2,112,300, which is a no-cost contract to Rutherford County, with said costs being reimbursed dollar for dollar. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the County Mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Health in the amount of $2,112,300, for the provision of local health services, commencing on July 1, 2013, and ending on June 30, 2014. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Does anyone have any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one ayes.
Item J2I, A Resolution Authorizing a License Agreement with the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for Office Space. Whereas, the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation desires to enter into an agreement with Rutherford County for the purpose of securing approximately 1,560 square feet of office and related space located at Number 1 South Public Square, Room 215, Murfreesboro, Tennessee 37130, for the groundwater protection staff. And whereas, the term of the agreement shall begin on July 1, 2013, and shall end on June 30, 2014. Whereas, the state shall make payment in arrears on the last day of the payment period in the amount of $650 per month. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a license agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim. On behalf of Rutherford County for office space for the groundwater protection staff, payable in arrears on the last day of the payment period with monthly installments of $650 effective July 1, 2013. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any questions on that? All right. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one ayes.
And passed. Thank you, Ms. Ely. All right. We're moving along in the agenda. The Health and Education Committee, there is not a report. Property Management Committee, there is no report. Now, we have Public Safety Committee. We have three resolutions. Commissioner Farley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, on the agenda, be a resolution to approve the revisions in the OGI Plan Document. Whereas, Rutherford County previously adopted the Only Job Program, OJI, for its employees in January 2009, with one amendment made to date in February 2011. And whereas, it is best interest of the citizens and residents of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the said OJI program will be amended as hereafter set forth. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rutherford County hereby approves and adopts the OJI program as amended and set forth in the attached Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference and is set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Sereno. Are there any questions?
I'll say one thing. There was one, found out tonight, that there was one issue when it was brought to Public Safety that I had a concern over, and it was the diluting of the drug testing at the Board of Education. It's my understanding that that had been resolved, and I don't have a problem with it like I did early on in Public Safety.
I think that's correct. All right. All of you then, in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did I get, excuse me just a moment, did I get a second on that motion?
Sereno.
I don't believe.
Sereno. Commissioner Sereno.
Sereno, all right. Just, I was thinking about too many other things at the same time. All right.
Next is a resolution to approve the juvenile detention contract with the State of Tennessee. Whereas, the attached contract between Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center and the State of Tennessee Department of Children's Services for Housing of Juvenile Offenders, a copy of said contract being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length as set forth verbatim, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials fore and on behalf of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to enter into and execute fore and on behalf of Rutherford County the contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Human Services, excuse me, Children's Services for Housing of Juvenile Offenders. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second on that from Commissioner Turner. Any questions on this? Please, all of you in favor of this, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Also, there's a resolution to approve the juvenile detention contracts with Franklin and Dyer Counties. Whereas, the attached contracts between Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center and Franklin County and Dyer County for Housing of Juvenile Offenders, copies of said contracts being attached here too as a collective Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length as is set forth verbatim, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials fore and on behalf of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to enter into and execute fore and on behalf of Rutherford County the contracts with Franklin County and Dyer County for Housing of Juvenile Offenders. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Phillips. Tiffany, any questions? All right. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Just a moment here, let me have a little bit of, Mr. Farley, did we actually do the, you did, the last one you did was the Dyer and Franklin Counties. Did we do those in sequence, or did I miss something?
They were reversed.
They were reversed? Okay. But, we got all three of them done? All right. I just wanted to be sure.
Franklin, Dyer, and OJI.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Phillips.
A resolution to approve speed limit requests of 30 miles per hour for Craddock Road and 25 miles per hour for Stonewood Subdivision. Whereas, the Rutherford County Highway Department is responsible for certain county roads in Rutherford County, Tennessee. And whereas, TCA 55-8-153 authorizes the Rutherford County Commission to prescribe speed limits as it may deem appropriate on any road being manipulated, maintained by Rutherford County and authorizes it to erect appropriate signs. And whereas, the Rutherford County Highway Department has recommended and requested the following speed limits with appropriate signage designated county roads, Craddock Road 30 miles per hour, Stonewood Subdivision 25 miles per hour. Whereas, the Public Works and Planning Committee has recommended said speed limits be imposed for the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and the maintenance and preservation of these county roads and persons traveling thereon. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. That the maximum speed limits be deemed appropriate and reasonable by the Rutherford County Commission upon recommendation of the Rutherford County Highway Department pursuant to TCA 55-8-153 are as follows. Craddock Road 30 miles per hour, Stonewood Subdivision 25 miles per hour. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Turner. Anyone have any questions? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That carried.
Okay. Our second.
Do we have one no for Mr. Schaefer? I have to let the record reflect that.
Our second item on the agenda, I'm going to call Commissioner Phillips, Jeff Phillips, to, up to the front to help present that, since he is the chairman of the Planning Committee. And I'd also like to state that this planning did not, or Public Works did not vote on this, so we felt it a little bit more appropriate for Commissioner Phillips to present.
Thank you, Tiffany. Let me, before we get into this, there was a couple of people who talked tonight about the sprinkler system. And the Planning Commission has heard many, many, many comments on the proposed sprinkler system over the last eight, nine months. And public hearings were held, and even some comments from the public without a public hearing, just to make sure that everything was kind of heard and fully discussed. And if you guys will allow me just to kind of go back and do a brief history, I think the two folks that spoke tonight against the sprinkler system were very typical of some of the comments that we heard. And members of the Planning Commission, correct me if you think that I'm wrong, was kind of typical of some of the comments that we heard as we were going through this process. And what I heard tonight, and I may have heard it wrong, was that we're mandating sprinkler systems in development. And let me just say that that is not the case at all. It is incorrect. Let me also say that about four years ago, and it's probably been a little longer than four years ago, this body talked about, well, it's probably been six or eight years ago, when this body talked about areas of the county that were primed for development but would not support fire safety because of the lack of fire hydrants. And there was a lot of discussion at this body over several months. As a result of that, the Planning Commission put together an alternative to development in those areas where the water lines were so weak that they would not support fire hydrants. So, as an alternative, as an option, to allow development in those areas that would not support a fire hydrant, there was this policy, this program put together. It's in effect. Well, I'm sorry, it's not in effect right now. But, up until about a month ago, it was in effect and has been in effect for well over four years without any problems. As you well know, the comprehensive plan that we voted on and passed in January of this year was worked on for at least four years as well, and took just a lot of work on a lot of people's part to make sure that we were looking forward into the future. And as a result of that and that passing, we decided to, that it would be proper to update our subdivision regulations. And we didn't call it an update, but we called it a redo. And that's where, that's the reason that we're here tonight. Because if we would have just updated those regulations, we probably would not have been here. Since we decided to say we're going to put in new regulations, and there's only a few new ones, that created someone, and I think it was Representative Carr, taking that before the state attorney general and asking for an opinion. That opinion came back that, since it was new regulations that we were installing or wanting to install, that we would have to get permission by two-thirds of the body of the county commission, and that's fine and well. But, my whole point is that there are areas in the county, as we get into the future, that need to be developed. And the Planning Commission wants to ensure that that can happen. According to our regulations, without proper adequate fire protection, some of that land is not developable. That's the reason that this is so important. And that's the only reason. It's an option. It's not a mandate. There are areas in this county that will not support fire hydrants. And according to some reports that we're getting from CUD, adequate water supply to some of those parts of the county is not in the foreseeable future. And I mean years and years out. So, if that land wants to be developed and can be developed, this is an option to allow that development to happen. It's only an option. It's not a mandate, never has been, and it's not proposed to be a mandate right now. And I hope I didn't overstate that, but I respectfully kind of disagree with some of the comments that we heard, that we're mandating certain things and we're not. And we're not trying to over-regulate. What we're trying to do is to allow development to happen in areas where it cannot be developed without adequate fire protection. It's strictly a public safety issue. Let me read this resolution. I think Doug Demossi's here. If you have any questions that I can't answer, I know that Doug will be able to help us. Whereas, Tennessee Code Annotated 68-120-101 requires that if a local government seeks to adopt mandatory sprinkler requirements for one-family or two-family dwellings, then the local government may adopt such requirements by either ordinance or resolution as appropriate upon an affirmative two-thirds vote on the final reading of the legislative body, and such requirements shall be voted on in a resolution separate from any other ordinance or resolution addressing building construction, safety standards, and, whereas pursuant to the Rutherford County subdivision regulations, the developer of a subdivision shall provide fire hydrants in all subdivisions. Let me read that again. Whereas pursuant to Rutherford County subdivision regulations, the developer of a subdivision shall provide fire hydrants in all subdivisions. And whereas the Rutherford County subdivision regulations state that fire hydrants shall be placed to ensure lots within all subdivisions are within a maximum of 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant with a note on the plat stating fire hydrants shall be installed per the regulations of the water providers. And whereas it is now in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to permit sprinkler systems for one or two-family dwellings in certain instances and circumstances otherwise consistent with the Rutherford County zoning resolution and subdivision regulations. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. In all subdivisions, with the exception of partitions as defined in Article 2B3 of the Rutherford County subdivision regulations, even if such partition is deemed to be minor or major plat due to the need of a fire hydrant waiver, the following shall apply. Aye or one. In the event water lines in the area cannot support a fire hydrant as determined by the water provider for that subdivision, or if the proposed development is not in close proximity to a line that can support a fire hydrant and extended such a water line is not feasible, a waiver may be granted at the discretion of the Planning Commission. The applicant for such waiver shall provide documentation with the water provider that the water lines available for the development cannot support a fire hydrant, or that it is not feasible to extend a line of adequate size to serve the development. For the purpose of this section, a water line will be deficient if it does not conform to the following standards. A, water volume is less than 500 gallons per minute and/or B, residential pressure, residual pressure be less than 20 pounds per square inch and/or C, other standards not listed here may also be cited by the water utility provider and the determination, and their determination of whether a line, a water line can support a fire hydrant. Two, the granting of a waiver, I'm not quite as fast as Commissioner Coggan, so y'all have to bear with me as I catch my breath. Two, the granting of a waiver from a fire hydrant requirement shall require any residential development in a subdivision to install a sprinkler system in accordance with NFPA 13D, also to include an audio alarm flow switch to be approved by the Rutherford County Building Codes Department. Three, the requirements of this resolution shall not apply to existing residential structures located in the proposed subdivision. Resolve this 12th day of September 2013. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Allen. Now, any discussion, Commissioner Jordan, and then Commissioner Phillips, excuse me.
When Commissioner Phillips read that, he read one line that's not on my iPad, about, something about petition lots, and I've got a question for, and I'm on planning, I've supported this the whole time, because this is just, in my opinion, a tool in the toolbox. But, if I could make a motion to suspend the rules and ask Doug Demossi to come up and ask a question.
Second to that, and all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
And we're going to let Mr. Demossi and Mr. McCreary answer that, because that language has been crafted by them even today.
Because I was under the impression that this only applied to what used to be referred to as major plat subdivisions, three or more.
Correct.
And so, if somebody has one house out there on Little Country Lane, even though it's a one-lot subdivision, and they get a waiver for a fire hydrant, they do not have to put in a sprinkler.
That is correct. That is still correct. Yes, sir.
Because this says right here, if you get a waiver in all subdivisions, you have to have a sprinkler. So, I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Talking about, and Commissioner Jordan, just to make sure we're talking, you're talking about after the parentheses in all subdivisions.
The granting of a waiver from the fire- Out of two, the granting of a waiver from the fire hydrant requirement shall require any residential development in a subdivision to install fire sprinkler in accordance to, that doesn't say major plat subdivision, that said any subdivision, there are a lot of one-lot subdivisions.
Right, I see what you're saying, but the intent of this is, again, only to apply to anything but one or two-lot subdivisions.
Three or more.
So, three or more, yes, sir. Yeah, this, I see where you're going with that.
As long as we're all on the same page. I've been supporting this the whole time. There's been so much misinformation out there, as Chairman Phillips said, it's unbelievable. The newspaper, the radio, and I'll talk about, they're going to start requiring sprinklers. That's not at all what this is. I had an individual call me today and said, I own some property, and I'm praying that you don't take the sprinkler option away, because I've got a piece of property I want to develop in a year or two, and if you take that away, it's a hayfield. I cannot develop it. And this is not by any means requiring people to put sprinklers in houses. It's just an option that, Jeff, I'm repeating Jeff now, but it's what was said before, if you don't have sufficient fire, water flow for a fire hydrant, then there can't be a development. It's agriculture or whatever, recreational tract, and it's just taking options away. You know, this is by no means are we forcing anybody to put sprinklers in any structure.
Correct.
But as long as we're all okay, and that's all on major plat?
Yes, sir. And I think that's covered even up here, because it says with the exception of partitions. So really, this isn't applying, none of this applies to that.
That wasn't on the copy on my iPad, right?
Yes, sir.
We're sorry about that, because this was lately posted on there, and we had to get the language just exactly right, and they do have it right. Let's see, Ms. Phillips, I believe, was next.
I don't have a question.
Okay. Do you have a question, Mr. Demossi, Mr. McAdoo?
Yes, I got one question. Do we have a map of these specific areas that you're talking about? In other words, I see the language say, if it's far out in Rutherford County, what's the definition of far out to the?
Yes, well, do we have a map that shows which areas have lines that can support hydrants and which ones don't? Not in our office, we don't. I think that's taken care of through the utilities, the water utilities. Typically, when we see a development that comes through, the water utility, especially at, most of the work we do is with consolidated utility district, the plats that we receive and the site plans we receive in our office are always scanned and are always sent to them for their review as well. And they'll let us know if there's any issues with supplying a fire hydrant and that kind of thing. Whenever a waiver is requested, whenever the Plan Commission's considering a waiver, that information always goes consolidated to find out, can a fire hydrant be installed in this area due to water lines? There's not a, that I'm aware of at least, in our office, there's not a map that says these areas around the county can't support a hydrant, but these ones can. Now, the water utilities may have that, but I don't think it's necessarily dependent on how far out they are. It really is more dependent on what kind of lines are there. You know, there are a lot of developments that are around the existing city limits. Typically, they do have more and higher-sized lines that can support that, and out in the rural areas, maybe not as much. But just because it's out in a rural area doesn't necessarily mean that it's automatically going to have to have a fire hydrant waiver. So I don't know if that answered your question or not, kind of. Our office does not keep that kind of information, yes, sir.
Doug, I wanted to ask, just a few minutes ago, I asked Candy with the Mtar, Milton Tennessee Association of Realtors, if they're good with it now, as well as the building group, you know, Home Builder Association, have they gotten in contact with you and we worked? Because they were at the public hearing and made the comments like we've all been hearing, you know, at planning, of the misconception. This has been on our books for four years, and I assumed it was okay then. And now with us changing our codes and getting everything aligned and doing some minor changes to it, this opened this back up. And so where are we on that? Because I think they want to send it back. And, you know, for them to be involved and talk, but I mean, we've opened that up, and I want to make that available to them if all possible, because the Builder Association is the top of this food chain, so to speak, and they need to understand, we all be on the same page. But then again, we've been talking about it for a long time, it should be clear, but as of tonight, we had two more people here to speak, and they weren't clear about it. So I'm just wanting everybody to be clear about this.
Well, we have had discussions on this. Now, I will say, we have not had any discussions since the public hearing we had at the Planning Commission about this. What you're seeing here tonight is what was taken out of the subdivision regulations that the Planning Commission approved, which will become effective at the beginning of October. So no changes have been made since that time, and I haven't had any other discussions about the content of it since that point with them. So what you're seeing here is the same thing that was considered at the Planning Commission.
And the two comments we had tonight, I don't think reflected a representative of the building community.
Well, I'm going to ask that next, after we get done, if we can suspend the rules. We've got those two folks in the audience here that represent both of those entities for them to speak on it. If they're clear on it, we can go ahead and handle it now, I think, and which hopefully we are, but if not, then we may need another meeting on this. I want to make sure that everybody's clear on what we're doing here. This isn't forced on building a new house right outside the city limits or wherever. This is actually pro-development here in allowing these properties that don't have the water pressure, they can't have a water hydrant to build. That's all it is, so thanks.
Mr. Schaefer?
Mr. Demossi, just clarifying, you're saying that this is only applying to major subdivisions?
Okay, now, let me kind of clarify just a little bit.
The fourth paragraph then throws me.
The existing language that's currently in effect does say major subdivisions. Now, the wording was changed a little bit under the proposal you have here tonight, because under our new subdivision regulations, the way we classify subdivisions is a little bit different. Major and minor subdivisions, as currently defined, are defined by a number of lots. Under the new regulations, which take effect October 1st, they're defined by the amount of work or the type of work that you're doing. So major and minor isn't necessarily the best use, to use for a classification now. But anything with one lot or two lots is considered a partition under our new regulations, which is why we changed it to that, as opposed to using major and minor. But in essence, what you're looking at here applies to anything, a subdivision that has three or more lots, as opposed to under the old regulation where it was four or more lots. That's really the only change that we made between the old regulations that are currently in effect and this before you tonight.
Okay, so paragraph four that I have on my iPad, it says one or two dwellings.
I'm looking at the, I think paragraph four on your iPad.
What I'm approving is what's on the resolution in front of me, correct?
You're approving what, excuse me, what Mr. Phillips read out and clarified that. Let Mr. McCreary speak to this just a moment.
Let me try to clarify this, just. There, is it on? Let me clarify this just a little bit. When you say the fourth paragraph, I assume you mean the fourth whereas clause. Is that what you're looking at?
Whereas it is now in the best interest of the citizens of the county.
Right, okay. That is correct. That language is correct. There is a difference between what Mr. Phillips read to you and what is on your iPad right now in front of you, because the language changed at a point in time. And this specific information or portion is important, and it goes after the now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. You see that on your iPad. But before the Roman numeral one, okay? And the language that Mr. Phillips read that does not appear to be on your iPad is as follows. In all subdivisions, parentheses, with the exception of partitions as defined in Article Roman numeral twoB3 of the Rutherford County subdivision regulations, even if such partition is deemed to be a minor or major plat due to the need for a fire hydrant waiver in parentheses, the following apply. So what Mr. Demossi was saying was, it does say in all subdivisions, with the exception of partitions, and partitions is a defined term under the subdivision regulations at this point. That speaks to Commissioner Jordan's point, which is that small subdivisions are not covered by this. And that is because they are defined as partitions under the new subdivision regulations, and under the language that Mr. Phillips read, partitions are accepted. The problem is, that specific language is not on the thing that is sitting in front of you, and as to why, I don't know.
Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's my question, is why was the current thing that was read to the commission not something that we could study before the meeting?
Well, that's one of those mistakes that humans have made. We thought that we were placing what Mr. Phillips just read on the sharepoint that you have currently. This was done this afternoon about 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock, but Mr. McCreary and Mr. Demossi need this document to read just like Mr. Phillips read. It was not accurate in its, so I don't know how this one got out there. Vicky's not here, but between a couple of our other ladies, we got this put out there, and I apologize for that, but the language was not appropriate that you're reading here without the addition of this additional one sentence that talks about partitions. And that was prepared by Mr. McCreary, consultation with Mr. Demossi.
Okay. Well, I guess regardless of how the mistake happened, it doesn't really matter, but I like to read and understand what we're voting on before the meeting. And I feel like we have an obligation to do that, and this further underscores why these things need to be ready, like two or three days before the meeting, so read them. But regardless, I guess it's okay now that it's been clarified for me, but I would like us to have these materials several days in advance if we can.
I agree with you completely, and 99% of the time, we have done that, but we, and then we'll make a slip-up. Mr. Young?
I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Demossi. The first one, which a lot of people don't know about, is what about dry hydrant systems?
As far as?
CUD doesn't have to put a hydrant in. I mean, developer could dig borrow pits out and make ponds and put in dry hydrant systems. It's done a lot of places in this country where municipal water systems aren't located, and that's an option for them. If they want, the cost is cheaper for them to do that versus a sprinkler system, is that in here?
There's nothing in here that talks about dry hydrant systems?
I mean, because I don't want to regulate these people and say they have to put in a sprinkler system when there is another option out there that's very viable. Most people don't know it, because it's just not common in this part of the country, per se. The second, I have a question about actual fire hydrant distances in this resolution of 1,000 feet. Why is that 1,000 feet? I mean, is it as the crow flies? Is it road miles? There's nothing there. I'm not comfortable with this at all.
Well.
I don't mind the sprinkler portion of this, because it's an existing regulation that we're just reaffirming, but the other parts of it I don't like. I'm not going to vote against the sprinklers, but I can't vote for what we've got here, because frankly, 1,000 feet's ridiculous. And there's no language in there that defines whether it's road miles or as the crow flies.
Well, right, I'm sorry.
There's only a handful of people that pick up five-inch hoes at 3:00 a.m. and laid out 2,000 feet, because nobody thought to put in fire hydrants. You know, and I'm tired of it, and I know the other guys are tired of it, too. Something needs to be done about that.
And if I could, I can address that to you. The regulations that you're looking at as far as the 1,000 feet, the maximum of all lots between, the maximum 1,000 feet for all lots to be within for a fire hydrant, that's language that has been within the regulations as long as I've been with the county and even longer than that. Now, there has been some discussions at the Planning Commission, actually at the public hearing that we had on the subdivision regulations. There was discussion at that time about, should we change the requirement? Because right now, does it say as the crow flies, or as I would say, as the truck drives? You know, there was a lot of discussion about that. There was some, actually, we had proposed to change what was being proposed in the regulations to state, basically to make it an as the truck drives situation. Historically, it's always been regulated as the crow flies, and that was even before I took over with the Planning Department and became employed with the county. So there is discussion ongoing about that right now. Actually, we're in the process of working on a report to that. I've talked to and contacted several jurisdictions around us to find out how they do the measurement, if it's as the crow flies or as the truck drives. And there was some discussion about making some of those changes at the last Planning Commission meeting in the subdivision regulations. They wanted some more study on that, so we're in the process of doing that. But it's a point well taken, that it is something that we do need to address.
That's why if it's in here, as far as, sort of, we're looking at it, if you look at it all.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I used to go to some subdivisions in my area, whether they were HOAs or not, and speak to them. Some of them did, you know, the neighborhood watch stuff, and some did, you know, trying to get together how they were going to do these fire hydrants. And the 1,000-foot then was, and I don't know if it's changed in the past, I guess I hadn't done one in probably five, six, seven years, but then it was an insurance requirement deal. 1,000 feet by road, and why they said by road is because the fire hydrant pulls up, they attach it, they go down to where the fire, where the house is on fire or structure's on fire, and fight the fire. Or they pull in front, and they pull down to 1,000 feet. So we laid out fire hydrants in subdivisions that citizens went in together to pay for that fire, because they were expensive. And you got 1,000 feet this way and 1,000 feet this way, and there's a lot of different scenarios that you could use, whether you were in a cul-de-sac or what. But that's what that was at that time, and it's been in the code that way. But it was through the insurance purposes on your home, on the insurance, to lower it, is why that was. But I'm going to respectfully ask to amend the motion, to send it back, I'm sorry, one more time. That gives these two entities to get with you, gets the wording right prior to us looking at this and vote, because I think it might be handed out right now. But we'd all feel more comfortable about it. We're not under a time restriction here, and to make sure everybody's comfortable, everybody's clear on what's in black and white, and what we're doing, what we're not doing. I'd make that an amendment.
Second amended, that you're making a motion to table this discussion until the next meeting.
Actually, send it back to planning, so I was talking about sending it back.
Planning? Hmm. So your motion is to send it back to planning. And we do have a second. Mr. Black, let me think on this, Mr. P, if this motion is appropriate. I don't know. Just a second, excuse me.
I guess planning, yeah. To send it here. Consideration. He didn't need it. They've already voted to send it here to us now, and send it back to?
I guess, I guess.
Well, planning, they did just what we're saying. They made a motion to send this on to the full commission with their recommendation. Now, you're going to send it back to them, they'll have to make another vote to send it back to us again? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I don't ever like the word "tabeling" in it, but if that's not the proper thing as far as sending it back to planning, what I want to do is give this 30 days, a comeback before this full commission. If it's back to the committee, I think that would be fine. To give these two entities the timeframe to get this worked out with our planning director right here, make sure we're on the same page, as well as the wording that's presented correctly.
The wording is correct. I mean, Mr. McCreary, him.
But it wasn't before the meeting. That's what we're not clear on. And I want to make sure everybody's clear, and we're not right now, and so I think this would help things.
What's your motion? I'm going to rule, your original motion is not appropriate just to send it back, because I mean, they've already set it up here to us to act upon it.
I would send it back to the committee then. And where did this originate from on the committee? It went from planning to here?
Yes.
Public Works, didn't it?
Public Works didn't make a recommendation. They.
Well, they didn't do their job, but, no offense.
It was just like a public hearing, and we don't vote on public hearings, so we didn't vote on this either. It's just part of a report from that department.
Do you think it'd work good to send it to Public Works, and y'all discuss it, make the, make sure the wording?
I'm going to refer that to the new chairman, Commissioner Jordan again.
All right. Hey, I'm sorry, Mr. P.
My main point here, Mr. Chairman, is to give it 30 days to make sure this is right.
Make a motion to table this resolution until the next commission.
I'll make a motion to table it. I don't know who seconded it, was it? Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to table the resolution until the next commission meeting. Now, Mr. P, do you want to talk to that question or the original one?
Well, I think it's related to both of them. I just want to clarify this, 1,000 feet. 1,000 feet comes from how much hose is carried on a fire truck. There's 1,000 feet of large diameter hose required on a fire truck. That's why you've got that requirement in our subdivision rules. And it may actually be 1,200, but I know 1,000 is in the language, it has been, and it's got to do with how much hose is laid out. And yes, I've picked up a lot of large diameter hoes over 1,000 feet many a time, and it's not fun, especially when it's cold and it's frozen and you pick it up like straw. when it's cold and it's frozen and you pick it up like straws. But that's where that regulation came from. Having said that, this is no change from what we've had. So there's no problem with what... I mean, I haven't heard a problem from any of the builders that I know, and I promise you, they call me when they see something like that. This is no change from what we've done, other than that little bit of language where we've changed, instead of saying a three lots is a major subdivision, we've got new verbiage on that. That's it. Let's go ahead and get this done. We've drugged it out long enough.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Jordan?
I just don't know why we'd vote no. I don't have a clue why anybody would vote no for this. It's an option. It's all it is, is an option. There's no reason to vote against this. It's giving people the ability to do that if they want to. If they don't want to, it's the same as if it didn't exist. It's not a requirement. I say we just vote on this tonight and move it forward because I may not be the most intelligent person in the world, but I've been involved with this since the very start, and I see no reason in the world anybody, if they understood it, would vote no. None. The 1,000 feet is in the subdivision regulations. Regardless of how we vote on this, on that, that's a whole different sub... This just restates what's in the sub regs, Mr. Young, and, you know, we can argue about that another time. The Planning Commission actually approved the subdivision regulations. We're looking at that next month or two anyway. But that's regardless of this. This just restates what's already in the sub regs and has been for years. But I see no reason to vote no on this, not to... Somebody needs to enlighten me on why we would vote no. It just gives people another option.
All right. Commissioner Allen?
That's one of the points that I wanted to make as well, Will, is that the Rutherford County Planning Commission sets the subdivision regulations. So so far as the 1,000 feet from the fire hydrant, that's not the scope of this body. The limited scope of this body is to only vote on the sprinkler issue, and that's because of how the state law is written in Nashville. Out of respect to Commissioner Sandlin, I understand what he's trying to do. He's trying to be a peacemaker, and I get it. We've had a lot of discussions about this for a long time. When we had the public hearing, you know, folks suggested that we needed to table it and we needed to study it, you know, et cetera. The bottom line is, we just don't agree. And we can keep meeting and we can keep talking about it, but we just don't agree. I don't know why we don't agree, because I'm with Commissioner Jordan, you know. I'm just, I'm a logical gal, and the reality is, the quicker you put water on fire, the quicker it goes out. That's good. From a planning department standpoint, it's our responsibility to make sure that there's appropriate infrastructure in place in order for development to occur. If the infrastructure does not exist for fire hydrants, then we need to give you another option. I'd like to give you another option. We don't have to. We can absolutely turn down every single development request that comes in where a fire hydrant cannot be supported. The other issue is, the fire hydrant issue is very complicated, which we like to oversimplify it, and we talk about the size of lines. The folks from CUD came and did an excellent job educating us. It's about water flow and flushing the lines and utilization. I mean, there's, it's a much bigger issue than can we put a bigger pipe in the ground. So I don't want to oversimplify that. The way I see this, it's really no different than before we had step systems. Back in the day, if you didn't have sewer and your land wouldn't park and you didn't have a septic system, then you didn't develop that land, and then step systems came along. And now, all of a sudden, that opened up a whole world of development for the rural community. It's the same thing here. The way it sits right now today, if you cannot support a fire hydrant, your development will not happen. And so it's beyond me why the developers, MTAR, anybody would be against that, because if you have this tool in your toolbox and you can potentially put a development in that land, it's better for that landowner, it's better for those other folks that want to buy land here. You know, the only reason I could see you would be against this, if you want to say us four and no more. We've got all the people in this county we want. We don't want any more built. You know, just lock it up. That would be the reason to vote against this. Other than that, it's beyond me.
All right. Mr. Young?
I'm not going to vote against it, but I'm not going to vote for it. I'm not going to vote against fire sprinklers. I'd be crazy in my profession. But my questions have not been answered about dry hydrant systems. Nobody's ever thought of that. It's thinking outside the box, but it's a real viable option to the developer if they so choose to go down that road. Who regulates that? Does CUD say how much water's in the pond or does our fire marshal? Nothing's in here about that because nobody's thought outside the box. I got a four-year degree in fire science. We look at this stuff. Papers are written on this stuff. You know, we think about this stuff, but all this was about was the sprinklers. This is an existing regulation and all the hoopla about trying to sprinkle everything, that's not what's going on here. This is existing regulation. But when this was written back then, that wasn't thought about, thinking outside the box. So I'm just not going to vote on it because I'm not going to vote against fire sprinklers, but I can't support it the way it's written because it doesn't put all the options out there on the table for the developers or the county. So that's just my opinion. Nobody's going to change it, you know, but that's just the way I'm at with it.
Well, I think you've given us some good ideas, and it's no reason in the world that we can't continue that kind of discussion to even make additional options available that would even make it even better than what we've got here. I think that's wonderful to think outside the box and try to put some other tools in the toolbox. Commissioner Jordan or Mr. Farley could be next.
I was going to say, as a member of the Planning Commission, we'll be glad to look at other options, and we could be back up here in six months with another option beside the sprinklers, the dry hydrant system, and we'll look at whatever comes along. This is just option one. We could have 10 in five years. I don't know. But if you vote, if you don't vote at all, it's the same as a no. It takes 14 yeses to be approved, and abstained is the same as a no. So it don't take 14 yeses for this to pass tonight, but I think we're willing to look at any options. This is just the first one we've come up with. It's been working pretty good for four years, but we'll be glad to look at anything else that comes along.
Ms. Cook?
All for the question?
All for the question. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Now, what we're calling for the question on is whether we're going to table this motion. That's what's on the floor, and then we're going to have to go back to the original motion. So we're voting?
No. All for the question on the session. We're ready to vote on the amendment?
That's what I'm saying. We're going to vote on the amendment. Just that we're voting on your amendment, which is a motion to table this discussion on the original resolution and vote until the next commission meeting.
It's about supercharge of the jar.
Well, on this, on this question here, yes, just on the question. All right. First of all, I have to get approval on question. All of you in favor of calling for the question on voting on the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Opposed.
Excuse me, we have one. So we do have a two-thirds vote on the question. Now, if you vote yes on the question, you're going, you're voting to delay this, to table this for a month. All right.
We're going to...
Ma'am?
We're going to... Yes, we are going to do a roll call vote. So if you vote yes, you're voting to table this and put this discussion off until another month. If you vote no, you're ready to vote tonight. All right. That all being said, please cast your
votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Six yes, 15 no.
All right. So the motion failed to table. Now, we're ready to continue the discussion or ready to vote whenever you are on the original motion. We have two people that arisen... I'm going to let the lady go first. I didn't want to... Which of you got up first? Commissioner Phillips?
Motion to...
Well, the question, I'll have to defer to Josh. I think the question was just on the motion that the amendment on the table.
The motion to table, I think, was the, was what the question was called on, and that's what the vote's heard on. So now you're back to the original.
We could take another motion to a question, but we're not... Commissioner Phillips?
This is something that's really prevalent in my area. The, you wouldn't believe how many neighborhoods out in my district were approved with fire hydrants, and now today, the fire hydrants are not usable because of water lines are not, will not support them. This, to me, is really opening up the regulations and allowing developments to be developed with the condition that if the, if the fire hydrants are not, if you cannot put fire hydrants on there because of the water lines, then they can use the sprinkler system. So without copying what everybody else said already, I agree with everything that's been said, but I also want to address a couple of the misinformation that was stated. First of all, if we were to require smoke detectors in homes instead of fire sprinklers, you're not going to save small children. So if, you know, because a child is not going to be able to get out of the house just because a fire alarm's going off. Second of all, you also have the issue in developments of fires jumping from house to house. And so if we don't provide fire protection in a neighborhood or in a subdivision, then you're not going to be able to protect other people's property. And we live in a democracy in which people can make their own decisions about things. And so with that, sometimes we also, as a government, have to protect people. And I wouldn't, you wouldn't believe how many calls and people call me because they have bought property in developments because they didn't realize different things that go on in developments that we don't regulate, okay? So, and that is their responsibility to find out. Do we really want people who, purchasing homes who don't know better about their fire hydrants and not having a fire hydrant and not being educated about that? I just feel like we need to protect people for that, in that sense. So remember that this is just opening up regulations. It's not putting new regulations on residents.
Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask, like, to what extent can the commission modify or make amendments to this document? Or can we?
Commissioner Stevens, the, you know, this comes before you, kind of in an odd way, as compared to most land use matters that would come here, because it, according to the statute, these sprinkler regulations, if they're going to be implemented, have to be done by separate resolution, separate and apart from any other land use matter, any other building code or anything else, which is why it's coming to you like this as opposed to just existing in the subdivision regulations. So for that reason, in a manner of speaking, it really didn't, although it came from the Planning Commission, they didn't really vote on it in this exact format. So I suppose this body could make an amendment to the resolution as it exists right now.
All right. Commissioner Farley, excuse me. Let's let Mr. Black go, because you've...
I watched the meeting the other night, planning. I think Mr. Demossi, he said anything that the Planning Commission made and brought before the commission, either we could just up or down. I'm not clear on this.
Ask that again, Mr. Black. I was having a little trouble hearing it over there.
As far as Planning Commission, I think it was Mr. Ball or somebody, one of the ones that's on plan, he said, well, if we send this to the commission, can they make any amendments to whatever that was brought up here? And you said, no, this is a whole different animal.
Well, I think, well, yeah, I think what he was asking, I mean, he was asking a similar question, I think, to what Commissioner Stevens was just asking. And as I, and again, I'm just kind of going by memory here. I think the context that I was making, the comment I made was, it said that the regulations, as we're looking at them now, the subdivision regulations, are different from the zoning regulations. As you recall, when we brought the new zoning ordinance to you back in November of last year, it was basically you voted up or you voted down. And that's what the state law says. You cannot change the zoning regulations. These, what we're talking about tonight are not zoning regulations, so that particular part of the state law doesn't apply to what we're talking about tonight. I think that's what Mr. McCreary was just saying to Commissioner Stevens, that it probably is possible to make amendments to what you have presented to you tonight.
Commissioner Farley?
The way I understand it, and I'm no attorney judge, but you are, but the way I understand the law was, and the reason it's here tonight is because of the subdivision, I mean, the sprinkler ordinance. The subdivision regs is on the Planning Commission. We have no authority over the subdivision regs. The only reason this is here is because of the sprinkler. So really and truly, if this is only about the sprinkler, I don't see how we can make an amendment. If it's about the sprinkler, either you put, give them the option for the sprinkler systems or you're not. Either vote it up or you vote it down a two-thirds, a two-thirds vote is the way I understand the way the law, because I was down there that day that the law through the legislature was put in place. So, and I may be wrong, but that's why I understood it.
Yeah, well, I agree with everything you just said. I mean, the sprinkler statute is the reason that it's before you in the, the way it looks here. But I guess it would depend upon what we mean by an amendment, you know. For example, if, because the language that's in here, one little i, two little i, three little i, is basically the language that was in the subdivision regulations. You're just reapproving it, as has been said multiple times. I guess in theory, if you wanted to change one word, you know, from water lines to water line, could you make that amendment? Sure, I think you could probably make that amendment because you're not amending the sub regs, you're not amending the zoning resolution, you're amending this resolution. Now, how far that goes in terms of substance of the amendment, that's a different question altogether, and I was trying to answer the more technical question, I suppose. Could there be an amendment to this from this floor? There probably could be. I think it would depend on what it is, but there probably could be an amendment because you're not changing the sub regs tonight and you're not changing the zoning resolution. And per the sprinkler statute, only this body by two-thirds vote can address the sprinkler situation that you're addressing.
Okay, we've had all of this discussion. Is there more discussion, or are you ready to vote? All for the question. Mr. Turner, do we have a second? Second on the call for the question and others over here, excuse me. All in favor of calling for the question on the motion to adopt this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there was opposed? All right, so everyone's ready to vote. If you vote yes, you're voting to adopt this resolution that we've, has been read to you and been passed out to you in hard copy now. And so if you're ready to vote, and it's going to take, we have to have a two-thirds majority vote for this to pass, otherwise it fails. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
17 yes, 3 no, 1 abstain.
Thank you very much. Was one abstain, is that correct, Mr.?
Yes, sir, one abstain.
All right, the motion is passed. Thank you very much for a healthy discussion, and we're ready to move along within the agenda. Let's see. All right, Steering Committee, Mr. Coggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you have before you. This is, it may be a letdown after the last discussion. I apologize. More just a housekeeping issue on clarifying some language regarding our Audit Committee makeup. Whereas on June 16, 2011, Rutherford County established by resolution an Audit Committee, and whereas the intended membership of the Audit Committee needs to be clarified, now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at Section 2 of the original resolution, establishing the Audit Committee is deleted, and in its entirety and in lieu thereof, the following is inserted. Section 2. The Audit Committee will consist of seven members, to be comprised of two members of the County Commission, one member of the Road Board of Education... I'm sorry, the Board of Education. I'm just trying to just read too fast there, Commissioner Phillips. One member of the Board of Education, one member of the Road Board, and three citizens of Rutherford County who are not elected officials. One members of, one member must either be an active or inactive certified public accountant to ensure the committee's independence and effectiveness... To ensure the committee's independence and effectiveness, no Audit Committee member will be an elected official, with the exception of two elected county commissioners, the elected member of the Board of Education, and the elected member of the Road Board. A county employee, spouse of county official or employee or person that co-mingles assets with an official employee of Rutherford County. While all committee members need not be accountants, they should possess sufficient knowledge and experience in finance, business, and accounting to discharge the committee's duties. The members of the Audit Committee shall be appointed by the County Commission upon recommendation of the Steering Committee. County commissioners and citizens shall serve four-year terms, and the Board of Education and Highway Committee members shall serve two-year terms. To establish staggered terms, the initial County Commissioner members and two citizens members of the committee shall be appointed to a three-year term. The initial Board Member, Board of Education member, Road Board member, and one citizen member shall be appointed to a one-year term. Thereafter, members will be appointed to the full term. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effect on the first day of September 2014, resolved this 12th day of September 2013. Mr. Chairman, a move for approval.
Commissioner Jeff Jordan, second. Questions or discussion? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question about this. Now we have five out of seven members of this board who are elected officials. An Audit Committee is supposed to be independent, disconnected from the group that's being audited, I, I think. And looking back, I regret even having four out of seven people on this board as elected officials. But now we've got five out of seven. And that sends a really bad message, I think, to our public. I watched the Steering Committee the other night, and I agree with what everybody said about David Nipper's service, he does a good job. And sometimes we tend to make things emotional instead of rational, we, we want to make things personal. But the bottom line is, it was designed to have one school board member on this Audit Committee. Well, now we've got two. And it, it seems like we're changing the rules midstream to allow him to continue serving. And, you know, I don't have a question that he's doing a good job and wants to serve, but the fact is, we set this up to have one school board member. And now we have two. And he knew when he was running that he was not going to be able to continue serving on this board, but he shouldn't. When we had the Road and School Board Study Committee, one of the members ran for an office and had to resign from the committee because he no longer was just a private citizen, he got elected to the school board. And we had two members on there. So, I, I just don't think it looks good to the public for us to have five out of seven people that are making sure that our finances are in order as quote-unquote "government I just can't see that that's right. So...
And you're probably, some of what you're saying was reflected at the Steering Committee meeting. That's the reason you see that the effective date of this resolution is September the first 2014. What you're describing won't happen after that date. They have, in their wisdom, tried to let this be grandfathered for one more year. And then after that period of time, it'll be four out of seven.
Well, still, one means one.
Understand? This is, this is a recommendation from the Steering Committee.
When this was passed, it was designed to have one school board member, and now we have two. What else are we going to change midstream to accommodate people? I just think it looks really bad to the public for that. And again, it's nothing personal against Mr. Nipper, it's just the rational facts that one means one, and so I, I can't support it.
Okay, other questions or discussion? There seems to be none. It appears we're ready to vote. We do have a motion and a second, and it does clarify just the point that Mr. Stevens is making, but they're not making it effective until September the first 2014. So you're ready to vote? So I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Seventeen yes, four no.
A motion has passed. Okay, now we're to the point of, uh, other business, and Mr. Jeff Jordan is rising, and then Mr. Schaefer, I will not overlook you, you'll get to make your announcement as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. This motion was, was never intended to be a secret. It's been printed about everywhere. But I will repeat it, um, and here it is. "The County Commission request that the Democratic Party and the Republican Party not include the county commissioners on a Rutherford County primary ballot." And I need a second to speak to it, of course.
Do we have that motion? Do we have a second? I was at Commissioner Pete. Now, Mr. Jordan, could you give our secretary up here a copy of that, so we can actually get that in, uh, be sure we've got the wording just right, if you don't mind?
If he can read my writing, we're in good shape.
He will do that. Okay, now, now you may speak to your motion, and I will repeat your motion in a moment.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, thank you again. Uh, the steering has already heard five minutes and 12 seconds, I believe, of my objections the other night, and I'll repeat them briefly for everyone. Uh, I pose this really on numerous levels, and for numerous reasons, but I'll, I'll limit it to three. First of all, this adds 80 days of campaigning, uh, to any candidate that's running in a primary, and it will pretty much come close, at least, to doubling the expenses for any primary winners. Now, I'm not going to stand here in front of you and tell you that I am very much against county commissioners being in a primary, and then turn around three months from now and run in one myself. I am not going to run in a primary under any party label, because it is a bad idea. I'll save my energies for the summer and run as an independent. I also object to, now, I did talk with Nicole Lester about the cost of a Rutherford County primary, which I understand we're going to have one. My, my request is for county commissioners to be left off the ballot. I understand we're going to have a Rutherford County primary. It's going to cost $107,000. Taxpayers are going to pay it. The state's not going to save us this time, like they did four years ago. We're going to pay it. Everybody listening is going to pay their fair share. There will be, of course, some additional expenses, and I believe, I'm going to quote Ms. Lester correctly here, she said considerably more to me on the phone. If we have a longer ballot, 21 additional people, excuse me, 21 additional races, we don't know how many candidates, and for the sample ballots and the advertising costs, which will be considerably more, it's got to be, because it's going to more than double, probably quadruple, the number of races that will be on the ballot. Another objection that I have to it, and, and this is just a personal philosophy of mine, and, and I, I worry about people being left out because of those 80 additional days, and the additional money, which is considerable amount of money, as we all know, you can spend a good deal of money, and the commissioner raises if you so choose. Uh, I, I'm afraid we're going to leave some people out that might want to run. We need, on this body, we need more women in this room, we do, folks. We need more minorities in this room, and I don't want to leave anybody out, and a chance that they might want, uh, possibly to run. We do not need to turn this body into a, a, a county commission that is made up of one gender, uh, one or two or three professions only represented here, or one political, political party. We do not need to do that. And I'm asking that this request carry the vote of this commission. I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, everything that Mr. Jordan just said, um, is very noble and, and very idealistic. But the fact is, is it's not our decision to make, and we can ask the local Republican Party to backtrack and make a different decision, but they've already voted twice to have these primaries, and they've made it very clear, but they are not going to backtrack. So this effort is a futile effort, though very idealistic. I'm not 100% convinced that having primaries is the best thing, there's pros and cons that could be argued about that, but the fact is, it's not our decision, and it's not our place to tell them how to make their decisions over there, but I can see. Uh, it goes back to the U.S. Constitution, the First Amendment gives everyone in this country the right to assemble or associate with organizations, and that would include political parties. Our state law gives the political parties the option, the Republican and Democratic Party, to have primaries for these local offices. And so no one is being forced to do anything. You don't have to run in the Republican primary, and if the Democratic Party calls for one, you don't have to run in their primary. You can run as an independent. Part of the misinformation out there is that it's heavy-handed, and that everybody's being forced to run as a Republican. Well, that's just not true. You have the option of running as an independent if you so choose. As to a longer campaign, I just can't see what's bad about going out there and having more time to meet the voters. Uh, that's more time that you're going to have to make new contacts, and have more time for people to shake your hand and ask you what you stand for. Eighty days isn't that long in the grand scheme of things. I do agree that having to raise money is a negative thing, because some people may not be able to do that. That's a point that I understand, and I sympathize with. But as to trying to tell them what they should or should not do with the local party business, it's none of our concern to tell them what they should or should not do. We have to play within the rules that they set, that's what the state law says, and they have the right to do that. So I'm going to ask everybody to, to vote against this, just as a matter of futility, and that we can move on under the rules that they've given to us.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Um, you know, every time we approve a school, if it's K through six, we have to split the monies with the city of Murfreesboro. And I know that every time the Budget Committee passes, uh, a recommendation that we contact the city of Murfreesboro to not accept their fund. Their, their 15% if it's, uh, of the funding for, for the school that they get, you know, that we have to pay to them, if it's K through six. So, you know, then it's always, brings a chuckle, and we send it off, and it gets turned down, and this, uh, probably, probably the same thing will happen tonight, but I don't see any problem with still letting them have another chance.
Other comments or questions or discussion? The motion before us, Mr. Jordan?
Just a moment for, um, for rebuttal there. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it, as Mr. Schaefer just alluded to, um, we can certainly give, in this case, the Republican Party, I don't know what the Democratic Party is going to do, but we can give the Republican Party a chance to correct their error that they've made twice. I hope they appreciate me giving them that opportunity. Um, also, um, I'm, I'm not the least bit worried about the campaign. We, we get about 90 days in the summer, whatever it is. I went to 1,040 porches four years ago, and, uh, and the voters, I hope, did the right thing, but I, you know, we never really know. I suggest many of you in this room probably did more than that, um, but that was about all my old legs would, would carry. Also, um, and I'll, I'll just address this to Mr. Stevens, although I am not mad at Mr. Stevens, and I'm absolutely certain that he's not mad at me. But you came up here with a proposal not too long ago to wipe out one entire committee in the interest of saving a few dollars. Before that, we went through the 14 commissioner debacle, where you're going to cut out seven commissioners, leaving yourself with no opponent and me with two. Two Democrats, by the way. To all in the interest of saving money. Well, now here is an opportunity to save a few dollars. Let's take it. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and the motion basically reads that the, the County Commission would send a request to the Democratic Party and the Republican Party that the, um, Commission, the Board of Commissioners, you sitting commissioners, not be included in the Rutherford County primary ballot. That's the motion that's on the floor. Commissioner Pete.
Well, I actually thought about not saying anything, but I do want to say this, you know, I've been up here, it'll be 14 years now, and during that time, uh, I haven't worried about the guy sitting next to me, or the lady sitting next to me, or people behind me or in front of me, what party they were in. What I worried about was what our constituents throughout this county needed. And I think that's, that's what this is all about. This is not, "I'm a Republican, I'm a Democrat," or, or whatever, a Libertarian, or whatever else is out there. This is about us working together. You know, I want us to continue to work together. And I may not, uh, agree with you every time, matter of fact, Mr. Stevens, we usually don't, but I voted with you on that one a while ago. I don't, I don't know if you noticed that or not, you made a good point. You make a good point, you'd be surprised, a lot of us will go with you, and it doesn't matter if you're a Republican or a Democrat, I don't care if you've got a good idea, I'm going to listen to you. You know, I remember talking to one of the political parties one day, and I mentioned one of our senators that was in office, that was in the opposite party, and he'd done something that was really good, was basically say, "Hey, let's not send any mandates down to the state," that they have, unfunded mandates to the state. And I pointed that out to this group, and they said, "Well, you mean you're taking up for that person, and I'm not even going to say party?" And I said, "When they're doing something we want them to do, yes, of course I'm going to. It doesn't have to matter if you're a Republican or a Democrat. Please, let's continue to work together." Now, you said yourself, Mr. Stevens, Commissioner Stevens, that you didn't have your mind made up on this. Well, I tell you what you can do to send a message to whichever party, or both parties, is, "Let's all run as independents." That's what I'm going to do if I run for reelection. So that'll, that'll answer it for them, and let them know how we feel about it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I don't think that, from what I understand of this motion, it's not telling any of the political parties what to do, it's just requesting that they reconsider their vote. I think that when the Republicans did vote for a primary, they only passed their Executive Committee by a vote. But they didn't know how we felt as, as a body. And I think this would, if they vote again, this would send a message that, that we want to stay independent, we want to keep things like it has been, or we don't. And I think that if we do have primaries, if I run again, I'm a Republican, I will run as a Republican. However, I like the things the way it is now. So I, I'm going to send a message that if they want my opinion to vote again, that to vote just to keep it the same, instead of having primaries.
Thank you. Any other person wishing to speak? Commissioner Allen?
The only thing I want to add to this is, um, I've talked to folks in the Republican Party, surrounded by a couple of really good ones, right here. And so far, no one has been able to convince me why this is a good idea for the citizens of Rutherford County. I've heard about why it's good for the Republicans, I've heard about why it's good to advance conservative, you know, values, but nobody has told me yet why this is good for the citizens of Rutherford County. You know, I don't think we want to adopt the way they do things in Washington, it's, we're so polarized right now as a country, that it concerns me that this body would adopt that style. You know, we don't always get along, you know, we get our feathers ruffled sometimes, but for the most part, we work along, and we respect each other, and I'm concerned that if we, if we put those party labels on, that'll take away some of that camaraderie that, that we have. The other concern that I have is that you're going to squeeze out people like me. You know, I have no other political aspirations. You know, I'm here because I'm a wife, I'm a mother, I'm a business owner, and I want to serve my community. I want to make sure that Rutherford County continues to be a better place for my kids to grow up in, and they're going to want to live here. I am currently serving my friends, my neighbors, and your constituents as well, because I take calls from people who aren't in my district, and I'm happy to do it, because I asked to be here, I asked to be in this chair. But if you have to run two races, and you have to run twice as much money, you know, the only, the only thing somebody said to me from the Republican Party was, "Well, maybe you'll get a better candidate if you do that. Maybe you'll, you know, it'll be, you know, the cream will rise to the top," kind of thing. My concern is, you know, if you do that, then maybe that person who would be the best qualified, would be the best person to serve, won't be able to afford to do it, so you'll never get a chance to vote on them. So, it's probably futile, you know? I, I don't know that this is going to change anybody's mind, but I think it's really important, if you are so inclined to send that message, to say, "You know what? We do like how things are." And not because this is how it's always been done, but because we feel that this is what's best for the citizens of Rutherford County, and that's why I'd ask you to vote.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If there are none, we're ready to vote, and this is going to be a roll call vote, so we're going to request that you please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
Twelve yes, eight no, one abstain.
Right. That being said, the motion has passed, and we will craft a request and send to both parties that the county commission asks that they not include the board of commissioners in the primary ballot. Now, other business to come before our body, Mr. Schaefer.
This coming weekend is the second full weekend in September. And for X amount of years now, the city of Laverne has had its Old Timers' Day. Begins tomorrow night, there's a carnival set up down there, have breakfast on Gamble Lane at the Rescue Squad Saturday morning, starting at 5:00 a.m. 10 o'clock's a parade in town. Lots of entertainment going on through the weekend, including the carnival, the carnival is still there on Sunday with more things. So get a chance, take a trip to the northern end of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Any other business? Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Saturday afternoon, after Old Timers' Day Parade, you can go to the Smyrna Rotary Club Wings of Freedom Fish Fry. Each year, that event raises a lot of money that's giving back to the community. 100% of the proceeds go to charities around the county that do lots of great things for our constituents and the underprivileged folks around us. And this year, they've already raised over $70,000. Tickets are $40 each, you can buy them at the door. And this year, they do have a credit card or debit card swiper, and I hope to see everybody there to support this good cause.
Thank you for those good announcements. And Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a word to end on a light note, but an important note, I think, and that is that the county commissioner service awards came out this past month, and based on longevity and obviously, in the case of these people, some outstanding service. And I just thought I would call the attention to the body if you didn't, if you didn't see this, but we had five people that were really, I think, honored. And Mr. Gary Farley with 20 years of service, Mr. Steve Sandlin going on 24 years of service, Mr. Ms. Carol Cook on 24 years of service, Mr. Alan McAdoo, who is our senior, not in years, of course, but in terms of service, going on 36 years. And Ms. Joyce Ely, who was elected when she was 12, is going on 24 years of service. So my congratulations to you, and I really think they deserve maybe a small round of applause.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to tell us anything that we need to be aware? Otherwise, thank you for a great meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation. We are adjourned.